Morning ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call to order this public meeting of Johnson County, Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this twenty-fifth day of April two thousand twenty-two at ten o'clock AM. Please pray with me if you would care to, and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And the Father, we do thank you and praise you for the mercies that you give to us daily. We thank you for your power and your might. And what I ask that you would be with us through the Holy Spirit, that we would make some decisions today that are very important to the county and the financial of the county. I would ask that you would open our minds and our hearts to that, so we understand totally what it is that we need to do to make it right for the people of Johnson County. Lord, I ask that you be with us through the meeting that our fellowship and our meeting would be good, and that we would consider all things as you would have us consider them. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Johnson County Community Foundation, Johnson County Courthouse exterior lighting. Come up to the podium, please state your name for the record, ma'am.
Kim Castings. I'm here. I do work for the Johnson County Community Foundation, and so this is kind of how our all started. Um, I have a friend, personal friend, and a friend of the foundation as well, came to me and was very interested in getting lighting on our downtown courthouse. We do have the street lighting, but there is no uplighting for the courthouse. And so she kept referencing Hope Well Church. Wanted to apply for a grant potentially, probably out of the scope of the work that the community foundation does. But I said, let me help you get the steps in place, so we can make a presentation to the county commissioners. So the first thing we needed to do was get a cost. Before you, you have a plan that Dan Davis has submitted. So he can talk to the specifics of that. I'll let him do that. The total cost of the scope of the project for lighting the downtown courthouse is around seventy-nine thousand dollars. That cost has gone up since we originally got the original estimate last August. But there is a way to get some of that partially funded. Franklin Development Corporation here in the city of Franklin has a facade grant program, so the county could potentially apply to that nonprofit organization and get half of the cost covered for the lighting of that. Now, there's still the remaining balance that the commissioners would have to come up with out of their line items on their budget on an annual basis. And so that was something that we would have to look to you and see if that was a viable thing to happen. The good news is, since we have done the estimate last August and we just redid it again, we have more energy efficient lighting. And so the annual cost, I think you have a breakdown of that could be anywhere around three hundred and fifty dollars to four hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, is what is in the packet before you. There's also a copy of the application. It's very simple, the Franklin Development Corporation application. And so I didn't know if, do you have any questions so far? No. And Dan, do you want to come up and talk more about the specifics of the lighting? Not really, look at him. Because you know how to do it and how, where they'll go, because I'm sure that's questions that they would want to know. So if you can, share those with them. I do have it up here.
I'm Stan Davis on Davis Electric. Basically, what we designed for this project was to bore all the, pretty much all the way around the courthouse. There'll be lights on each corner down on the ground shooting up. And then in the front and the back, there would be poles that would be mounted on concrete bases that will raise the lights up to shoot a little more on the direct big part of the, of the front and the back entrance. The poles in the back would also have, because we're limited on space to put stuff in the back because of the parking lot, would be on concrete bases that would be two foot out of the ground. So if a car happens to hit, it's going to hit the concrete base instead of the pole itself. The two estimates that you had in front of you for cost for the lights to be run were based on whatever your kilowatt hour is for the courthouse. We guessed it oh-six and oh-eight, so per kilowatt hour. So whatever that is, that could vary a little bit, but that should be close to the range of what it is. The lights have ten-year guarantee on them. I guess other than that, you got any questions I'll try to answer.
Dan, how long is this price good for?
This price is already not good.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. I saw you had a four-fourteen. I saw you had a four-fourteen.
Well, you know, my work isn't any different anything else. The material cost are day-to-day only. I can't get anybody to guarantee anything more than that. I think they would hold it for, I think I can get them to hold it for, my guess, three to six months somewhere in that neighborhood on that. You do also see on that estimate that it does talk about being a rough estimate. And the only concern that I have is boring around the courthouse. I don't know what we're getting into. We don't have to be super deep. I don't know that there's any utilities in a way, except possibly that water line that feeds the, used to feed the fountain. I don't know if it's even working, but so utilities aren't an issue as much as, is there concrete under there? What were we born around and through to get under all those sidewalks?
We have no clue. And that, that was a question I was going to ask, who's going to be responsible for that damage? Is there going to be insurance to cover any damage that would be caused by the boring?
Yeah, my, my company would be responsible for any damage. When we would do the job, it's going to look just like it does now. But the boring part that I'm concerned about is not running into concrete that's three foot under the ground that we, nobody knows about. And then, then we have to back up and try to come up with a different plan.
I know there's a tunnel underneath the fountain. And we, this is probably a little premature as far as requests for this, because this time, I wouldn't be able to approve this because of all the construction that we're going to have around the courthouse here shortly of turning out all that concrete, redoing that fountain. All that's on our list of things to do this year. So I wouldn't want any, anything in there be put in until after we get that done at this point, because I don't want to take the chance of destroying something that somebody else has put in there. Because all that concrete around the courthouse gets tore out on the, the west side or north side around to the south and to the steps are going to be redone, things like that. So we've got a lot of stuff we're doing over there this year.
That'd be a perfect time to be putting some of this conduit, at least the conduit and stuff in.
After we get it, after we get it tore up, yes.
Yes.
Kim. With this Franklin Development Commissioner Corporation.
Yeah.
What is their grant? I mean, I know the application is simple, but what's their max? What's their? Would you have any insight into that as far as what they would be willing to?
The max, and since you have basically all four sides are visible and we're doing backside facade, back facades now too, up to fifty thousand and matching dollars. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions right now?
All right now.
Okay. Helen, do you want to come up and tell why this is important to you?
Good morning. I don't know anything technical, but I tell you, this is a dream.
Pardon me, could you state your name, please, for the record?
I said, it's a dream come true for me. I wanted this for many years, and I may not live to see it. I hope I do. Oh, I'm Helen Hodgson.
Thank you.
Live in Franklin on the east side, and Kim and I have worked together. Things are looking better as far as I'm concerned. But our courthouse is probably one of the most beautiful buildings in the Midwest. And you can go by at night. And you don't even see it. So I'm saying with this new venue opening up this summer, I just feel like it's a real asset to have the lights there. And we're so proud of it. I'm so proud of our city and everything that we've done. It's, you know, Franklin's on the map now. And so all I can say is I just pray it will work out. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I think that's all I have for you. If you have questions, I don't know what the next steps are, or if you need further information. I do agree that I think once maybe you're doing work in the front, if it works into that plan, this would be the time to maybe put some of that conduit in and some, and start thinking about that lighting, especially with the potential of the grant. So if that was part of a bigger project and you needed it for the fountain, like I said, I think FTC can go up to fifty thousand for this project. So that could be an opportunity.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. I would say right now with the way the financial is, I would not be in favor of it. But I would say I will talk to the Franklin Development Commission and see what kind of money they're willing to put into this. And that could change my mind. So that's the way I would like to move forward. If you give me some time to meet with them and do a grant application and see what they say, I would be more than willing to do that. So that's where I stand right now.
Yes, ma'am.
You've committed to this other project.
This has to be formal, Beth.
This is my mom. Obviously, we're here to support her. But you've already committed to the project up front and the fountain and all that. I just wonder.
I'm sorry, ma'am, we have not committed yet because we don't have pricing.
Okay, well, I just wonder if, when you make a decision, if Dan was, you know, in conjunction could talk to them and it, if it was more cost effective to do it, you know, at a certain point during that project, you know, even if you could come up with some of the money or it was part of tight end, I think we could do a GoFundMe account and get this done. My mom's got a lot of people in her court and she's ninety-one and we want to see this happen. So I'm giving my cheerleader round here. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And I know this has come up before, and then I asked at a, at a public meeting for at that time, I asked the journal if they could do something in the paper, maybe putting something in there so people would make contact with us and let us know their desires. Because I'm going to be real honest with you, most of the people I talk to, their Johnson County taxpayers, don't think we need to spend the money on stuff like that at this point with everything else that needs to be done, like roads and things like that. So I didn't get a very good feel for this when I asked that before. So I would ask again with journals here, if they can maybe do something to, to get the public to make contact with us here to Commissioner's office and, and let us know. That's best way to get our attention is to let us know where you're at and what you feel like. Pros and cons, people for and people against. I just think that we need to get more input on this than what we've got right now before I could make a decision on that. Yes, ma'am. Sure.
My name is Ruth Phillips, and I, I have been like Helen. I've thought about this for many years, and I know it's not the number one thing on the agenda. I understand that. I understand the money situation. However, one of the things that I think, when you come to Franklin at night, all four main roads lead to that courthouse. They are lit up, so the sky is bright. And then you drive up and there's that gorgeous courthouse and you barely see the clock unless there's a moonshine with all the other things going on in Franklin and everything that's going to be going on downtown. Wouldn't it just be gorgeous to have that lit up? I know that's, that's not the number one thing the city needs, but I think with a GoFundMe and I think there are more people that would like that than not really, once we know. So that was just my point. All those four main roads stop at the courthouse. They come together. And there it sits dark and it's just like Hope Well Church. Every time I go by that, I just, I'm thrilled because it's just so beautiful. So that was my.
And, and understood. And, and as you're saying though, it's the city of Franklin, and they're the ones that should be probably more engaged in this than, than the county as far as money's coming to put into that. Because it does benefit the city of Franklin more than it does the taxpayers in Johnson County as a whole. So.
Eight, eight or nine years ago, actually I called two mayors when this all started, and they all said, although it's subject to the count.
Yeah, well.
That's good. They always say that.
You know, you want to give the money, you want to get the money from somewhere else, always. And, and I had a conversation with mayor on this previous, when this came up before about this. And at that time, as you say, they weren't really willing to do them to do it more than for us to do it. So, but it is a city of Franklin thing. As you said, all four roads from the city of Franklin come into it. And I think the city ought to get on board with this a little better and, and maybe do a little bit more. So.
So city of Franklin involvement, Franklin Development Corporation is funded from the redevelopment commission. So those dollars are actually city of Franklin dollars that we're going back into that. So there is a contribution and that would be half.
Right. Yeah, I, I still think it should be a little more than that. But anyway, that's, that's where we're at at this point in time. Yes, sir, Mr. Davis.
I just have a question. And I didn't know anything about this GoFundMe page. So if, if the, between the foundation and the GoFundMe page paid for the cost of it, would the commissioners be willing to pay the monthly or yearly fee to operate those and give the okay to install it?
And, and at this point, I, I can't answer that till I would hopefully hear from more people on that as far as. But I mean, you're, you're talking not just the cost of the operation of it or the electricity. You're talking about maintenance and upkeep. If something gets damaged, you know, that's all monies that would have to come out of the county to pay for the upkeep and, and repair of that. So it's a little more than just the, the electrical usage or the, the water usage. And those are things that, that we need to consider. And, you know, whether it's money well spent or not is really not my opinion more than it is the people that are paying the bill. I'm one of those taxpayers, but I'm only one of those taxpayers. And, and that's what we always try to do is try to think ahead on what we're going to be with, with the whole county regionally. So just things we consider. It's, it's, this is not the easy job. I was told it was, just so you know. How about you, Commissioner?
I mean, we will take into consideration when we do the walks, the sidewalks and fountain repairs and stairs. We will sleeve what we can sleeve underneath the sidewalks. And it would be wise on our part to put a sleeve in there for anything in the future anyway. So we will.
And the cost of that would be negligible while we're doing it. So that, that's not an issue. We can, we can make sure that's in the, the bids that we get for the courthouse. It doesn't hurt to plan ahead a little bit because there, there may be other things we need to get under there too. So and I don't think that would be an issue to, to get some sleeving and things in at that time. Because basically we're tearing out the concrete all the way to the fountain to get that fountain repaired and working again is what we're looking at or getting prices on. Because as you say, we got that beautiful fountain that's been there for years and years and it hasn't worked. I felt it was important to get that working on that end. So there's nobody more engaged in improving the courthouse than I am. And I think, as you know, we put a lot of money in the courthouse, and I was the one that instigated all that to get that done to, to, to start maintaining our courthouse. We're getting ready to put new windows in it and new doors, because they have just basically failed. So we are putting money in the courthouse and that, the time we're doing that would be the time to plan for something like this at that time. So I don't want you to think I'm dead against it. But I still have to consider the, the whole game, I guess, with all the people. So that's the only, that's the only thing I'm saying. I'm not against what you're trying to do. It is a beautiful courthouse. I saw that right off the bat when I got here. So as Commissioner, so we're working on it.
He also was responsible for lighting up the Hope Well Church and it's gorgeous.
Yeah, the Hope Well Church is nice. Yeah, it does. So.
So I would say don't go away discouraged.
So what would you say it could be if it wasn't working?
I'll meet with the Franklin Development Corporation and see what kind of funding they've got available.
So it could be something that could happen.
No, you know, and we've got, all that concrete's going to be torn. We're, we're, we've got a lot to do, and I don't even know when that project's going to start at this point. We, we're just now starting to, to, we're in the planning phase of it. We have a, our architect or construction managers working on it on getting cost and drawings and things to get that all done. The windows and doors, I mean, we're talking over a million dollars, just so you know, that we'll probably do next year, just because we don't have the funding for this year in the GOB. But we're working on it and, and we've already got, I've already got the funding in the GOB, this year's GOB for the concrete and network. If we can keep it within budget with the way prices have gone up. So once we know where that project's going, when it's going to start, we'll have more information on that at that time. I'm hoping it starts this year to, to get that going. So.
I wouldn't say don't be discouraged.
Yeah. You, you, you will. Well. I get that. And now again, that. All I can tell you is is stay healthy for as long as you can. Okay. You're doing real well, ninety-one. You're, you're doing much better than my parents at ninety-one. So I do appreciate what you're trying to do, ma'am. I'm not, I'm not against that at all. Which, if you don't, if you're not heard, then it doesn't matter. You got to make yourself heard. So I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Will. Just be patient. The government works slow. I, I know you hate to hear that. So do I. Animal shelter approval to, to go anywhere else? Do we need something else?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was just making a smart comment about how I thought it works.
Approval to apply for a bench field veterinary clinic, community care grant.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion of second.
We're, we're good. We're not. It's all for good cause.
We do this sometimes. Have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carries. We're down one today. Commissioner West is not available by Zoom. Commissioner Wallace. Motion.
Be easy today.
Sheriff, approval of corporate agreement with Annaberry Job Corps Center.
I'm Burgess Johnson County Sheriff. Normal agreement that comes up from time to time, legal has had it. So just waiting to move forward on it.
Sure, it's a little bit easier now than it was last year.
It is much easier.
I moved to approve.
A second, any further? Have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Thank you. Court of Administrative Approval to Apply for the FY two thousand twenty-three IOCS Problem Solving Court Grants for Superior Court, Circuit Court, Superior Court Two, Behavior Health, whatever, all four of them.
Randy Kirk, Dog Court Administrative.
I'm on a new computer and I'm really having a hard time seeing this.
You got them all right. It's four total.
Yes, four total.
And I'm going to gladly approve that because I've witnessed this and it is really benefiting a lot of people.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your efforts on that. And the judges.
I'm taking it as a motion.
That's a motion. That's a, yeah, I'm happy to make that motion.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Yes, they are. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Nice bright jacket, by the way. Highway, oh boy, here we go.
Here we go. Look Maston Highway Supervisor. First item on the agenda is consideration of acceptance of a proposed state road relinquishment agreement with the Indiana Department of Transportation. We've had some preliminary conversations about this.
I'm just, you mind if we move number three up and get that approval of that over with before we get into this, this, because this is going to be a long discussion, I'm sure. I'd like to move to number three, the approval of review scores and consultant contracts. Okay. Oh, I guess we can't.
You can. It just depends.
Yeah, let's go. I'm sorry. Yeah. I didn't realize it was for Smithville. I didn't know the project on my mind.
I couldn't make it easy. I'm sorry. So we've had some conversations about this in meetings, and I provided some information both to the commissioners and the council, terms of numbers to consider as we make our decision. The most recent report that I forwarded for your review contemplates a, essentially a break even point. It assumes that, and based on the calculation shown in the report, there is a net deficit in accepting these roads into the county's inventory when we start calculating in maintenance and resource costs. However, we don't start that process at zero. We start that process with the relinquishment dollars. And at some point in time, we reach a point, a break even point where the cost of the county began exceeding the benefit that we receive. Based on the reports and the calculation, the net annualized benefit of accepting the relinquishment is outweighed by the net annualized road maintenance cost to the county just over one hundred and twelve years. So there are a few caveats with that, which I will get into here. So just a little background information. The relinquishment agreement we are considering would result in the county receiving thirty-five million dollars of federal funding towards the Smith Valley Road Reconstruction and Widening Project. Current cost estimate for that project for all phases is about fifty-five million dollars. The county would not receive the thirty-five million dollars directly from Indot as they are federal dollars. This would work like our normal federal aid local projects where Indot holds those federal dollars, but Indot handles the bid letting for construction and pays the contractor that dollar amount. One thing to consider with the thirty-five million dollar offer is that Indot currently has five projects that are in development on the three roads being discussed for relinquishment. The cost estimate of those five projects is five point two million dollars. So the starting point, which is an adjusted relinquishment agreement revenue to the county, taking into effect, or into effect that the county would have to fund that five point two million dollars results in an adjusted relinquishment. Results in an adjusted relinquishment of twenty-nine million, seven hundred thousand-ish. In addition to that, the road miles, which total twenty-three point four-two centerline miles. Would be added to the county's certified road inventory. So the county would receive additional distributions in our normal highway funds. This includes the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, MVH, Local Road and Street Fund, LRS. And the county's Wheel and Exciser Tax, which is deposited into the MVH Fund. Now estimating. Future revenue. In those funds is difficult because it's largely dependent upon mileage changes. Population changes and registration changes of other counties, cities and towns, but. I have conservatively estimated about one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Based on the funding formula calculations that were performed. I do believe that ultimately that one fifty is conservative, but. The actual calculations don't reflect that. So again, in terms of benefit. The adjusted relinquishment agreement amount be twenty million, seven hundred-ish thousand. And the potential revenue conservatively of about an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Now, in terms of costs. There are. A few different items to consider, the two of which are included in the calculations in this report. One obviously is, what are the maintenance costs to the county to take over and maintain? The roads in the relinquishment agreement. For. The roads, which includes State Road forty-four, State Road two fifty-two and State Road one forty-four. That annualized estimated maintenance cost is about two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Now that is maintenance of the pavement and the pavement surface. That would not include any sort of capital improvement project. Like a full road reconstruction or an intersection improvement or curve realignment. As those aren't beyond the scope of what maintenance work would be. And generally, the county would pursue federal funding for a project of that size. In addition to that, there are additional resource needs for the county, particularly for winter maintenance. We have the equipment and capability to perform most of the maintenance work on these roads. But in the winter time, we will need adding minimum two additional truck driver positions. And one additional truck in our main plow fleet. The annualized cost of those resource additions is about one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars a year. So. The, again, the estimated expenditures, two hundred and sixty-two thousand is the annualized estimated maintenance cost. And one hundred and fifty-four thousand annualized estimated resource cost. So taking into account all of those numbers, the adjusted relinquishment as a benefit. The additional annual distributions to our highway funds as a benefit. The annualized estimated maintenance cost as a deficit and annualized resource cost estimate as a deficit. That comes up with essentially a two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar per year deficit. To take on these roads and maintain them, but as I mentioned, the agreement doesn't start at zero. Technically, it starts at twenty-nine million, seven hundred thousand dollars. So dividing our starting point by what the annual deficit is. Results in a break even point of one hundred and twelve years. Now, a few considerations in those calculations. I have discussed annualized numbers. The reason for this is to give some perspective on how that impacts our annual budget each year. In reality, those actual maintenance expenditures will be lump sum expenditures when they are account encountered. For example, the numbers that I provided would annualize the benefit of a. Mill and resurface of the asphalt pavement on one of those roads. In reality, that dollar amount would be spent in one year, in the year that we do that construction. Additionally, an item to consider is that. The potential for moving some of our capital project expenditures. In particular, the reconstruction of concrete neighborhood streets. From the highway budgets to a new potential revenue source, if established by the county council. Does free up additional funding in our annual maintenance program to be spent on maintenance activities. Rather than those high dollar capital expenditures. These maintenance numbers and estimates do not include bridge and large covert additions to the county's. Inventory and ultimate maintenance. Those are not inconsequential costs. However, due to the types of projects. For those structures and particularly the bridges, there is a wide variety of options. And subsequent costs to project types to maintain those structures. Additionally, as we have been doing with the bridges that are already on our inventory. We would likely pursue federal funding for construction on any bridges on those roads that. Needed to be reconstructed or rehabilitated. We would also plan to self perform as much maintenance as possible to the large. Coverts on the road, as that's something that we have experience with as well. The numbers in this report are twenty twenty-two numbers, even though we're talking. A century out potentially. There's a reason for that, because quite honestly, it's going to be difficult to predict. Cost inflation and additional revenue for that time period. So we do know that costs will increase over time, but based on the way that the. Highway funding formulas work, as the county continues to grow, we will continue to receive additional. Distributions in our highway funds. The report. Contemplates a net benefit. As I mentioned, the thirty-five million dollars that would be set aside for the Smith Valley Road. Is specifically for that project, as that is how federal funding has to be programmed. So there would be an immediate need in the next few years to fund the five point two million dollars. In NDOT projects that are currently under development. And the only caveat that I would provide on that five point two million dollar number. Is that it, that is not our estimate, so I don't know if it contemplates increased costs. If inflation continues, so there could be a possibility that those cost, that cost could be a little bit higher. But as those projects become ours, we also control the scope and can adjust if needed. To be within budget or as close to budget as we can.
That's a mouthful.
Was, I need to drink the water.
So what funds are we going to receive now? The, if we, if we do this relinquishment, we take this, what funds do we receive the day we do that?
So if approved today, items one and two would be the dollar amounts that would be under contract. As part of the relinquishment agreement as of today. Those two contract totals are roughly twenty-four million dollars. That item number two is about three point eight million dollars of federal funding. That is specifically set aside to begin design engineering on the Smith Valley Road project.
So then eleven million. The, we're going to depend on the federal government to keep a promise that they're gonna give us that money in a federal grant.
Technically, the state government is who we'd be depending on.
No, because it's federal money, correct? That goes to the state that then would pass it on to us.
So the remaining eleven, yes, you're correct. The remaining eleven million dollars would come later this year when NDOT programs out for twenty twenty-eight.
But then those funds wouldn't be received until twenty twenty-eight.
Correct, and the the relinquishment agreement itself, which is item number one. That provides a little bit of money for right of way acquisition during Smith Valley Road project development. But again, those construction dollars are twenty twenty-seven dollars.
I sure wouldn't bank my investments on anything like that as a personal issue, would you, Commissioner? I was more favorable before I knew that there was, there were funds withheld for a period of time. That we may never see, Luke, I'm sorry, I mean, we, we've kind of been here before.
In in terms of of what is under contract right now, yes, those additional dollars would not be under contract right now.
So we're taking on the responsibility of something, they're telling us we're gonna get twenty-nine million for. Clear because of the cost that they have, which I think are probably not correct at this point. With the way things have gone up, but then we wait on, third of that, basically, we wait on. Hoping then in two thousand twenty-eight that the government doesn't say, we don't have that money now. And we get it on something we're already spending money on, correct?
Though the federal government can keep printing money, so that's a.
I know they can, but they don't like giving it to us. And we know the state doesn't like giving it to us, so that just, you know. I don't like, I don't like the sound of that, like I said, it's not an investment I would take if. If if it was my business, I guess, I would have to say, I'd rather depend on us. Than depend on them to lie to us, or like, and I'm not saying lie to us, I've been in the sense, just us not getting it for some reason or another. Which can be any reason, they can say, no, we're not gonna do that.
And it could be they don't have it, could be potentially recent, as you.
Which could quickly happen in the direction we're going, because you can't print money forever.
In terms of. Confidence with the people that we have been negotiating with at NDOT. And I have a hundred percent confidence that we would receive the extra dollars, I have.
As long as they're there. We're talking eight, six years down the road. What if they're not there and we don't have that confidence?
That would most likely impact more than just our Smith Valley Road project, the federal funding program falls apart.
So then we've got to come up with it on our own.
Correct.
Which we could do now.
And we would potentially have to come up with it after accepting the relinquishment in that scenario. As I was saying, the, I have complete confidence in the people that we have been talking with. That the remainder of the money will be provided to the county for the Smith Valley Road project. I like signing twenty-four million dollars worth of contracts about zero percent. I don't have, as you mentioned, if this were an investment, that is a concern, so we have to weigh. The the word and the trust of the people that we've been working with, which I do trust. Against what is actually in black and white today. And potentially, and likely later in the year, the remainder of.
It's a. Say we get, we know we've got the twenty-four million and that's pretty well guaranteed by the contract.
Correct.
This point, does twenty-four million dollars make it worth taking those roads?
Had their offer been twenty-four million dollars, no. I would not have pushed for that. Now.
That's what we have right at this point, we have twenty-four million dollars.
Correct. There would be a break even point for twenty-four million, just like there is for the thirty-five million. At some point in the future, but certainly not nearly as far out as this.
Yeah, we're probably looking at eighty years in the future, if you look percentage wise.
Could be.
We don't know the cost of inflation, we don't know the cost of goods going forward. I mean, shoot, a truck and a driver by then, maybe two hundred thousand dollars a year.
The way we're going.
Yeah.
Could be.
So I I don't, it's just an awful long time to look forward to something.
And it also makes it difficult to try to estimate these numbers as well. I had to make some assumptions, I had to pull data from different places, so I can't guarantee hundred percent these are accurate. But I believe they're the best estimate that I could have put together currently. And considering the the break even point that was calculated. In a hypothetical situation where I completely blew this up. And I estimated half of what it's actually gonna cost for maintenance. That's still fifty-six years into the future for a thirty-five million dollar.
When does this decision have to be?
The relinquishment itself.
Because I know there's, I noticed that everything's pending legal, so obviously, we're not done with.
We have been keeping processes moving behind the scenes. So that in the event that the county were to approve the relinquishment agreement. All of the contracts, consultant selection, all of those things have been ongoing and we would be ready to move forward very quickly. The most pressing issue at the moment is that three point eight million dollars of design funding. Which is the second item on the agenda today. Those are dollars that are identified in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, which is coming to a close. NDOT has requested that we return that contract essentially by the first of next week or the end of this week. To ensure they have time to process it and obligate those funds before NDOT has to shut their financial system down for the end of the fiscal year. Technically, we could accept the relinquishment agreement at some time after this week. The offer would then be thirty-five million minus that three point. Million dollars of twenty twenty-two funded.
Plus, the eleven million would still be.
Yes.
Contenters.
Absolutely.
I like that, contenders.
Yeah, it's, well, I was gonna say contingent, but it's not really contingent, it's more contentious than it is contingent. Sorry, I have this much faith in our state and federal government. Commissioner, would.
You may weigh in on this.
I I do, but in in the the process of, that would you consider a special meeting? I I'd rather, I'd really rather hear our joint meeting with the council in in, and then we have a council member here, but I'd love to hear where. Maybe us in collaboration within a direction to go on this, I know. I know it's our decision, but I think we we really need some input.
You know, I'm gonna expand on what Luke said. The people that we've been in negotiations with for the last year, I have one hundred and ten percent faith in them. But I can't position the county. It's our job to keep the county safe and make solid business decisions. And the way the contract is structured now, I cannot be in favor of it the way it sets today. I do have confidence that we'll get it, but words are weak. And I need to know in writing that that will be part of this deal for me to make a conscious decision on this agreement. So with what you're saying, I think we need to meet with the council and as I talked to him last week or the week before. To be prepared as a council to look at the total funding of the Smith Valley Road project. Not just with this relinquishment in mind. And I mean, it's, you can go either way on this thirty-five million, because it does have strings attached, original. Conversations and negotiations with them did not have those strings attached, they became attached in the late process. Which kind of, I think, through Luke and I back a little bit. On how we were, how we were going to structure the funding, and I think it would have turned out a little bit different. But the way it sets right now, the way it's written. But the way it sets right now, the way it's written. I would not agree to it and I'm not voting. I'm just saying at this current.
Consensus.
I'm I'm just saying I would not. I think it's going to need more in depth discussions with the council. At our meeting this afternoon and and make sure they're fully aware of where we're looking at. So that's all I'm going to say about that today.
And again, I it it, I think we can both be available for maybe a special.
And I if if something changes in the next few days. Yes, I would be more than willing to set in a special meeting and and make make that decision.
Wednesday or Thursday.
Definitely, I would be.
Tomorrow's my anniversary and I won't be here. I don't even want to be called.
You better not be here.
I know, trust me. Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Dear.
As a request of Commissioner Walls, the council debated this issue at our last meeting. And basically Commissioner Walls asked us to give a. I'm not sure what you would classify what our final action was. It wasn't a vote. And it wasn't a what I call the shoulder shrug. It was a commitment by the majority of the council members to fund. The future needs for this, which is what you were asking. An additional meeting, certainly we could do. I think this afternoon, we're going to be so inundated with what we're going to be talking about. This schedule, but certainly we can, but the point being you asked for and received a confidence. Of that we would find the funding in some manner. And it was basically that my opinion, what the council said also was that. This break even point which we I said, I predicted fifty six years. So I was right on with his worst case scenario estimate. If he was blew blew up all the figures. And Ron West might still be on the commissioners at that point in time, but. Majority of the rest of us won't be, won't be serving. But you know, we make decisions now for the future and all that we do and not for the past and. You know, if he feels necessary for that, we have new information for us to review and discuss. Certainly, you know, we can do that, but I believe we, did you receive in your opinion, what you felt was a confidence? Vote from majority of the council.
A consensus, yeah, I I got the consensus. You were looking at funding the whole project.
Well, the hundred million you were talking about.
Yes, it was a hundred million for the what we need upgraded with everything going on.
Right, but but getting the getting the twenty five million we requested and he's giving that report to us now after you got it. That, you know, we would essentially break even. And if we don't do this, what we're going to have to do is come up with that additional. Thirty five million. So, you know, I think I believe we gave you what you needed as far as from us that let's go, let's move ahead.
If, but if we move into a position, I mean, it's, I know it's this for that, that for this between the council and the commissioners and not. Contentious whatsoever.
No.
But for me to make that decision, there has to be that funding structure put in. Does that make sense? I got a consensus from you guys.
Right.
But then when that is actually put into play. That vote is taken and the funding structure is put in place because if we approve this. We're going to be in a contract. And now we did, now all these numbers are going to shift all over the place. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I understand what Commissioner Barrett said about the, we never know what if, but or. And you know, but that to me, you know, I think the council is a consensus was that. You know, you've got a group of people that are saying somehow we know we got to do it and let's do it with. The thirty five million coming in and so we don't have to carry the whole load. I understand you've got contractual issues that.
It might not be thirty five million.
Yeah, well, you know.
Which changes the equation.
It changes that maybe it's thirty six years instead of fifty six or a hundred and twelve, you know, still break even is going to not. It's going to be out there, way out there. In my opinion, all the information and numbers we get. What you're saying about it not being in the contract is a little bit.
Take pause a little bit.
Yeah, and which we haven't, you know, we haven't seen a contract, so we don't know exactly what you're talking about there.
It's still ongoing. It's still.
Sure, okay.
Still turning.
If we need to talk about this afternoon, then we might be here till eight o'clock instead of six o'clock.
Well.
That's fine.
These are big issues the county faces right now, never probably in history, so we need to really give us some, you know.
And I just wanted to publicly say, and I'll say it this afternoon also, that I personally appreciate. Us working jointly together and working for the good and the future of the county.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Are we tabling one and two? What? No.
Honestly, I was going to recommend we potentially discuss this with the council at the special meetings afternoon as well. There is some information that was provided in this report that the council had also asked for, which I intended to provide them after the meeting today. So being an opportunity for me to say that mouthful all over again. But I believe input from both commissioners and the council makes sense.
I appreciate the concern. I'll second that. You'll get that information to the council. You'll email the information.
The cast of the meeting today.
Thank you very much, sir. So basically, one, two and three would be tabled, correct?
Not all of three.
Not all of three?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion to table.
This is, this is going to sound weird coming out of my mouth, but I think I would like to look at three to stay active right now. Because we need to continue moving and this is going to make us continue to move on that.
The the items for that, well, sorry, you have a motion on that.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Yes, the motion was for one and two and I'll second that. And all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, post, motion carries now on to three.
On to three.
And help you would like to motion in there.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
So basically, this is yes to prove this is proposal review scores, right? And consultant contracts, so we're doing reviewing.
We're just reviewing.
We're not making an action.
Yeah, it's approval of of the scoring process that the engineer and I had for the proposals that we received. And then additionally, it is, it would be a proposal for approval of the contracts up to certain dollar amounts. We are still working with the engineering consultants to finalize those costs. But they have assured us that the. The contract prices for phases one and two will not exceed the dollar amount set aside. In what would have been item number two, the federal funding for Smith Valley Road.
Which is the three point eight.
So.
If if we, if we, if we do this and we don't do anything else, we still have to to get this process going. I understand. Do we have the three point eight million somewhere to pay?
We sure don't. So I would ask.
Discuss today, but I want to, this project is important enough that we cannot idly set by. And I think with Councilman Dear out there, I think he's heard that they're committed to moving this thing forward and this is part of that. We just haven't got.
Well, that's a very small part of it, so I don't, yeah, I don't think it's a difficult decision. I just didn't know if we had that money somewhere I didn't know about.
So these two contracts would need to go to end up in conjunction with the item number two and that LPA agreement. So I, if I can make a recommendation for approval. I'd recommend regardless, we approve the scoring and the consultant selection process. Which would award phase one to Crossroad Engineers and phase two to United Consulting. And then contingently approve the contract amounts. With the understanding that if we do not move forward with the relinquishment agreement, we will. Essentially take some more time to prepare those and bring the full contracts to you at a future meeting. If it looks like we're going to need to fund those with local funding.
And and with the conversation I heard also with the council the other night, I think we're safe in saying that we can probably get that money if we need that, so. If you would look on that, sir.
I'd move to approve through.
He made a motion earlier to approve.
Second.
Make it again.
Yeah, the second, any further. Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, post, motion carries.
Thank you.
If that all made sense to everybody.
I it didn't make sense to me, so hopefully someone can explain it to me.
Don't make me. I appreciate all the hard work. I know, I want to say, I know Commissioner Walls and our legal team, Sheena, Daniel. Luke and everybody, you guys have all done a lot of work on this and I appreciate all the work you're putting into this. It's, I know it's been mind boggling. And a lot of hassle, so thank you very much. Ordinance number two thousand twenty two dash oh dash six ordinance establishing guidelines for submissions of digital files of Platts. Who's it?
I'll be happy to.
Can you move that mic?
Can you hear me? Hello.
Yeah, there you are.
We currently require when all Platts are submitted for recording after it's gone through the official process. That a digital file is submitted to replicate replicate the plaque. This just allows us to work directly from the engineers and surveyors is what they've done rather than us transposing the information onto. Our files. We've been doing this for over a year now and for the most part, everyone has this information and they're compliant. But it has been our goal to establish and order and ordinance requiring it. Once I think we've had someone who who didn't want to do it, but. Basically it's been works for a while and it's it's an ordinance that is established by most of the other counties as well.
Second, any further discussion? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, post, motion carries. New normal business. Claims and credit card. You got anything, Ron?
I, to be honest with you, I've had problems with my computer and I just got it up this morning, so I have not, I'll be honest, I have not really looked at the claims. Or the credit cards, so I hope you've reviewed.
I have.
So.
I'm I'm not as picky though. And I don't know if Commissioner West would would. Amazon.
Get any free advertising this week.
I had no issue. I mean, I always have some issue with things, but.
Same pretty straightforward.
Yeah, so I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion second, any further. And then all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, post, motion carries. Commissioners are men at sports seven two thousand twenty two special meeting with our ARPA committee. For eleven two thousand twenty two regular meeting.
Move to approve, sir.
Second, any further? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, post, motion carries. And I think we've got all the public comment out of the way, but if anybody else has anything to say, please feel free to do so or. Forever hold your peace, all hearts and minds free and clear.
Good to join, sir.
Second, we're doing, thank you very much.